Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call to order the County Planning Commission for July 22, 2024. If you'll please call the roll.
Commissioners Borja, Conklin.
Here.
Corona Sabaniano, Devlin.
Here.
And Raythel.
Here.
And we do have our quorum.
If you'll please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll please make the announcements for this evening.
And yes, the county fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The commission does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. seating may be limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. To make an in-person public comment, please complete and submit a speaker request form to the clerk. Each individual will be invited to the podium to make a comment. Members of the public may send a written comment, which is distributed to commission members and filed in the record. Contact information is optional and should include the meeting date and agenda or off agenda item number to be sent as follows. Email a comment to boardclerk@satcounty.gov or mail a comment to 700 H St., Suite 2450, Sacramento, California, 95814.
And that brings us to the non-contested portion of the agenda. Please call item number one.
So your item number one this evening is PLNP 2023-00296, and the request is for a use permit amendment, special development permit and design review. It is located at 8101 Sunset Avenue, approximately 165 feet northeast of the intersection of Sunset Avenue and Fair Oaks Boulevard in the Fair Oaks community. And the environmental document is an addendum to a prior mitigated negative declaration.
Good evening, Commissioners. Todd Smith, Planning Director. Welcome, Commissioner Borja. This item is non-contested, so we would defer to the commission if you would like a full staff presentation.
Any requests for a staff presentation this evening? All right. Commissioner Borja, Commissioner Devlin, any requests for a staff presentation or questions for staff this evening?
Thank you. None at this time.
All right. At this time.
Chair, I just want to acknowledge or let you know I'm here, virtually.
Oh, thank you so much. Commissioner Corona Sabaniano, do you have any other, any questions, or would you like to see a presentation from staff this evening?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'd like to invite the applicant up to address the commission if they would like to. And we can get you sworn in.
Okay, sir. If you please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses, I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give to the commission is the truth, so help you, God? And if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
And if you please state your name for the record and make the statement, I have been sworn.
Jeff Leonard. I have been sworn.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Do you need my address?
Nope.
Okay. I'd like to thank staff. We have accepted the conditions of approval. I don't have anything to add at this point. If you have any questions, though, I'm here to try to answer them.
Sounds good. I'm comfortable. Any questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you so much for coming down tonight. And any public comment on this item this evening?
And there is no public comment.
Thanks so much. All right. I'm happy to entertain a motion on this non-contested item.
I'd like to move staff's recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Will you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioners Borja.
Yes.
Conklin.
Yes.
Corona Sabaniano.
Yes.
Devlin.
Yes.
And Raythel.
Yes.
And the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much. That moves us to the contested portion of our agenda. And please call item number two.
And your item number two this evening is PLNP 2024-00035, and the request is for a tentative parcel map extension, and it is located at 5601 Winding Way on the northwest corner of Winding Way and Hackberry Lane in the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms community. And the environmental document is an addendum. And Mitchel, can you please pull up the presentation for item number two? Thank you.
Here on now.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Raythel, County Planning Commissioners. My name is Christian Balthazar. I'm an associate planner with Sat County Planning Environmental Review and lead planner for this project. The subject site is located at 5601 Winding Way on the northwest corner of Winding Way and Hackberry Lane, and is composed of three parcels totaling 36.8 acres. The proposed development would take place on 16.99 of those acres. The site is currently developed with the private K through 12, private K through 12 school known as Sacramento Advents Academy. Accessory structures associated with the academy include a tennis court, a greenhouse, and along with that, there is a duplex on the southeastern corner of the site. The accessory structures and the duplex are planned to be removed. The subject site is currently zoned residential density 2 and residential density 25 or RD 25. This rezon took place and was approved on March 24 of 2021. And the RD 25 portion is not shown currently in this image, but it would be on that 16.99 acres of proposed development. Surrounding uses are predominantly single-family homes in all directions, which are zoned RD 2 and SPA or Special Planning Area with a subzone of RD 10 and RD 4. Along with the single-family uses to the south, there is also a church that is zoned RD 2 as well. According to Sacramento County records, the subject site has had three previous planning entitlements, the first of which is a use permit and variance to legalize then an existing private school to allow a preschool and to allow a master plan expansion of the existing school facility. The request was approved by the Planning Commission on November 8, 2004. However, the expansion improvements proposed for this subject parcel were never made. On May 9, 2016, the Planning Commission also approved a use permit and design review for a wireless communication facility on the subject parcel. And lastly, on March 24, 2021, the Board of Supervisors approved a general plan amendment, community plan amendment, rezon, tentative parcel map, use permit, special development permit, and design review, known as Generation Village Carmichael Commons. The map and associated entitlement approval was set to expire March 24, 2024, and the request in front of you today is a six-year time extension for this project. Approval of this extension would set a new expiration date of March 24, 2030. And as previously mentioned, the entitlements request is a time extension pursuant to Sacramento County Code to extend by six years the expiration date of the tentative parcel map, the conditional use permit, the special development permit, and design review for the project known as Generation Village Carmichael Commons. On screen now is the previously approved tentative parcel map. For a little bit of orientation, north is going to be the right side of the screen here, so this would be your north. The existing parcels would be reconfigured to accommodate the proposed project and the existing private school on the site. Proposed lot 1 would be 18.84 acres in size and would encapsulate the existing private school operation onto a single parcel. Access to this lot would be from Winding Way on the southern side of the site. Parcel 2 would be, would contain the proposed independent living units within the, its own 13.13 acre parcel and would contain two access points, one from Winding Way on the southeastern side and another from Hackberry Lane on the east side of the site. Parcel 3 would contain the proposed assisted living slash memory care building within its own 3.65 acre, acres parcel and would be accessed from the northeastern corner of the site. Parcel 2 and 3 contain the proposed senior living community and would total the 6.99 acres. And as previously mentioned, that was rezoned and amended in March 24, 2021. The environmental document prepared for this project is an addendum to the previous initial study slash mitigated negative declaration. The previous IS slash MND was released for public review on October 13, 2020, and evaluated the topics that are listed on the slide. The addendum did conclude that the project would result in less than significant impacts with the implementation of mitigation measures. Staff have concluded that the product is consistent with the general plan, the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Plan, and the zoning code. There are no significant environmental concerns with the implementation of the updated mitigation measures. And additionally, the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Advisory Council met on April 10, 2024, and recommends the Planning Commission approve with a vote of 6 yes, 0 no, the requested entitlements. Planning Environmental Review staff recommends the Planning Commission take the following actions: determine the previous, the previous initial study slash mitigated negative declaration and the California Environmental Quality Act addendum is adequate and complete; adopt the revised mitigation monitoring and reporting program; and approve a six-year time extension for the approved Generation Village Carmichael Commons tentative parcel map resulting in a new expiration date of March 24, 2030, subject to findings and conditions. Before I do conclude my presentation, I do want to note that earlier today, there was a revision made to Attachment 2 of your hearing packets. The two items that were updated were items 42 and 43. There were conditions from SIPs. I would like to note that no new conditions were proposed, added, or removed. The language of the conditions themselves were revised in order to make it more consistent with their standard language of today. With that, I'll conclude my presentation. The applicant team is present to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Balthazar. Questions for staff this evening? Questions, Commissioner Devlin or Commissioner Corona Sabaniano?
Yes, thank you. Can you just confirm that our, the tree mitigation measures have been updated from what the previous requirement may or may not have been? Or are they, they are current at least?
Good evening, Commissioners. Julie Newton, Environmental Coordinator with Planning. There were no changes proposed to the tree mitigation measures.
Thank you. Are they current with our current policies, though, or is this an extension of an older policy?
Got it. Understood. The mitigation that's currently adopted with the prior mitigated neg deck is current with our standard policies and procedures for tree, for tree mitigation.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Corona Sabaniano?
No questions for me.
All right. Thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant up to address the commission if they'd like. Do we have some online and in chambers? Okay, perfect. Are you going to be answering questions tonight also? You can. Why don't you come on up and get sworn in? At the same time, we'll swear in the online applicant. Just in case, so we don't have to do multiple swearing ins.
Online, so if you would please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses, I do. And do you swear that the testimony you're about to give to the commission is the truth, so help you God? And if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
And if you would state your name for the record and make the statement, I have been sworn.
James Chaney, I have been sworn.
Thank you. And Mr. Gabriel, we, we can hear you, and your mic is open.
Great, thank you. I agree, and I swear as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can proceed.
All right. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is James Chaney. As I mentioned, I'm the School Board Chair of Sacramento Adventist Academy. This is the school that the project is adjacent to, and it's owned by the Northern California Conference of Seventh-day Adventists. We're very enthusiastic about this project. I know it is an extension here, but we've been partners on this project for a long time, and we're very eager. I speak for the board. I speak for administration. We're in lockstep on this, but we're very excited to get this project off the ground and, and see this come to fruition.
Thank you. And you guys are amenable to the changes or the slight update in language on the conditions?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Gabriel, anything else to add?
You know, I would add to that. We are, the school is going to be our partner in this project, and we're very excited and committed to it. We've been working hard to get building permits. We've got most of them, and we are excited to begin this development as soon as we can get through the, get all the building permits and adhere to the expectations and the requirements of the project and get going on. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn to my Commissioners. Any questions for the applicant team this evening? Commissioner Corona Sabaniano and Commissioner Devlin, any questions for the applicant team?
No questions for me. Thank you.
None for me, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for coming down this evening.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment on this item this evening?
We do not.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. At this time, I'll open it up for deliberation or motion.
Just, I think I share the applicant's enthusiasm of how this project will create some economic development in the area and creating a multitude of, multifamily units as well as a confluence and hospital. I think there's some wonderful fruits that can be born out of this project and look forward to its realization. And with that, I would like to motion staff, support of staff's recommendation for the extension.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any further deliberation before I call for the roll? All right. Please proceed.
Commissioners Borja.
Yes.
Conklin.
Yes.
Corona Sabaniano.
Yes.
Devlin.
Hi.
And Raythel.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
All right. That concludes item number two. Thank you so much. Please call item number three.
And your item number three this evening is PLNP 2022-00353. The request is for a use permit, special development permit and design review, and it is located at 3438 Watt Avenue in the Arden Arcade community. The environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Good evening. My name is Austin Chan. I am project manager for this project. This project is located at 3438 Watt Avenue, near the corner of Watt Avenue and Whitney Avenue in the Arden Arcade community. The subject parcel is currently developed with a commercial building. The project is located in the Shopping Center Zoning District. Some surrounding uses include shopping centers to the north and west. There's an office and single-family residential to the south, and a church and single-family residential to the east. The site is developed with the former savings center commercial building. This building has been vacant for almost 30 years and is deteriorating, and that is why there is an open code enforcement case on the site. Other concerns are, have been with homelessness on the site, but approval of this entitlement would remedy this code enforcement violation. Additionally, there was a lot line adjustment in 2023, which removed a common lot line between subject parcel and the adjacent parking lot parcel. This changed the original flag shape of the subject parcel with frontage off of Watt Avenue and Whitney Avenue and resulted in a square-shaped parcel with just frontage off of Watt Avenue. The entitlement request is for a use permit to allow a new self-storage facility in the Shopping Center Zoning District and a special development permit to deviate from the front yard setback and the loading dock setback, and a design review to determine substantial compliance with design guidelines. Some of the deviations are, for the, for the front yard setback is required to be 50 feet, and they are proposing 23 feet. For the loading dock setback, it's required a minimum of 75 feet from adjacent residential uses. And as proposed, the loading dock is 35 feet from the adjacent residential parcels. There was an initial study and mitigated negative declaration prepared for this project and released for public review on June 12, 2024. Some of the impacts discussed include aesthetics, transportation, air quality, noise, hydrology and water quality, and greenhouse gas emissions. The project would result in less than significant impact with implementation of mitigation measures. Here is the site plan. They are proposing a four-story, 91,900-square-foot self-storage facility. As you can see here, there are, here's the loading dock deviation. There's a single-family residential off to the east. This is not a typical industrial loading dock. This is meant for customers of the self-storage facility to bring in larger items in and out. And here's the front yard setback, which is 23 feet back. I also wanted to note that there is a parking lot adjacent to the north. This is not part of the application. This is on a separate parcel, but the applicant is restriping this parking lot on behalf of the property owner to allow for fire access along the north here. There is a driveway which is right turn only. They also share cross, they have a cross-access agreement with the northern parcel and the southern parcel, and they share a driveway to the south as well with the southern office building here. They're also proposing 10 new parking spaces along the south and along the east side where the loading docks are. Here are the elevations of the storage facility. This is a four-story building. The first story is set back for 46 feet adjacent to residential, and it's a tiered design, so the second, third, and fourth floors are set back 100 feet from the residential. Additionally, the windows are closer to Watt Avenue, and there are no windows along the east side, which is adjacent to the residential properties, which reduces any peering into neighborhoods or light that could be caused by windows in this area. Here's the floor plan for the first, second, and third floor. The fourth floor is very similar to the second and third floor in that they are self-storage units. The first floor also has a leasing office. Here's the landscape plan. They have trees all along the, the frontage off of Watt Avenue along the north and along the eastern side and part of the southern property line. They have screen trees along the eastern property line and coming around the southeast, which is adjacent to the single-family residences adjacent to this property. I also wanted to note that they do have a six-foot masonry wall along the entirety of the eastern property line, as well as adjacent to the single-family residential to the south, which turns into a wrought iron gate and then opens up where the, it connects with the office. The project went to an early CPAC workshop in 2022. Members of the community expressed concerns with location, lack of benefit to the community, and the height of the building in contrast to the location of the residential uses. The CPAC felt that the project was not preferable but would be an improvement upon the existing state of the site. The Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council met on March 28, 2024, and recommended the Planning Commission approve the requested entitlements. The Design Review Advisory Committee met on April 25, 2024, and recommends the Planning Commission find the project in substantial compliance with design guidelines. The project was found largely consistent with the general plan and community plan as conditioned. We did find an inconsistency in the policy for land use 51. And this was intended for not to have industrial uses in the commercial corridor. This is in a, in a mixed-use corridor. However, due to the lack of a corridor plan, as well as the lack of intensity in traffic, we felt that it did not deter from the surrounding uses. This project was also found largely, mostly compatible with surrounding zoning and land uses, no significant environmental concerns, and was supported by the CPAC and the DRAK. Planning and Environmental Review staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the following: determine that the environmental analysis is prepared is adequate, I'm so sorry. Determine that the environmental analysis prepared pursuant to SEQA is adequate and complete. Adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Adopt the use permit subject to findings and conditions. Approve the special development permit subject to findings and conditions. And find the project in substantial compliance with design guidelines subject to findings and conditions. That will conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Chan. Questions for staff?
Yes. Excellent presentation and analysis. Appreciate that. As I understand it, the parcel is located within an identified study corridor that's targeted by the county to activate vacant and underli, underutilized lands. Has there been a study? And if not, when will we expect to receive a study?
Commissioner Conklin, good question. Todd Smith waiting to answer it. I think the, part of the challenge here is we have 14 of those commercial corridors throughout the unincorporated county. Shortly after, actually during the course of the general plan update in the late 2000s and early 2010s, we did pursue a number of those commercial corridor study areas for more focused analysis. Then due to economic considerations, we put a lot of those on the tip, on the shelf, so to speak. We did adopt a handful of them, and we are looking forward to our general plan update in which we might be able to focus a bit more effort on some of those corridors in the future. At this time, we don't have a definitive plan to go back to that section of Watt Avenue, but we are looking forward to a northerly section of Watt Avenue.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for staff this evening?
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. Just related to the deviation from the 35 or the 75 minimum to 35 feet adjacent to residential parcels, I looked at the community response, and they said that there were no, there were maybe one comment, but did, did the neighbors behind find any issue to being a little bit closer to the, to the docking area?
Yeah. I took the project to the CPAC, and we had six public comments. They mostly had to do with the height of the building, as well as the lack of a need for a self-storage facility. I, the, the loading dock deviation that you're referring to is typically an industrial standard, but this is a self-storage facility. It's mostly meant for like large trucks, a lot of noise coming in and out, but this is like a, just for the customers of the self-storage facility.
So in your analysis, we don't anticipate, you know, large, big rigs? I don't even think they might be able to fit at that turning radius. So more than likely, we're just anticipating perhaps like smaller light to medium-duty vehicles and?
Yeah.
I haven't visited very many of these, but they don't seem to always be busy. I think they, they either like move in, get in and get out, and then pull out.
Yeah. It's not anticipated to have a lot of traffic or a lot of people at the facility at any given time.
Okay. Thank you. And then the next question, Chair. You mentioned the, it's not part of the application, but there's an agreement on the parcel for the parking lot restriping. When do you anticipate? Is that moving in parallel to this application, or is that just being submitted by the applicant as part of good faith to show that they're able to show parking lot space as the project moves forwards? Or is that something else?
It is, it's required in order for fire access along that northern property line.
Okay.
So it, it's meant, it's not on the property itself, but fire still has access.
Understood. And I drove by the site. It seems like there's more than enough parking spaces on the overall vicinity of the project despite it being restriped, because I think right now they're all kind of parallel to each other, the parking spaces as is.
I did want to clarify that parking area that's being restriped is not a part of this project. It's actually the church to the east that's their parcel, and that's parking for the church.
Okay. So that's parking for the church. Okay. All right. Understood. Thank you. That's, that's all for now. Thank you.
I'll hop onto that, because my questions were of a very similar nature. But so there's only 10 spots. That's the- That's the maximum expected folks that would be using this 90,000-square-foot building at any given time?
The parking standard that we used is just for general office building. We do not have one specifically for self-storage facilities. Based on that, they only have three required parking spaces. They are providing 10.
Okay. And then the loading dock, are there any restrictions around nighttime use of the loading dock? I know with an industrial loading dock, you may have trucks coming in at, you know, 3:00 in the morning with lights. Just curious if that would be expected in this sort of, this sort of arrangement?
Yeah, they do have hours from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily where they would have access with a security code.
So they don't have 24-hour access to the site?
No, it's 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily.
Okay, so that would mean no loading dock use at night? Okay, perfect. Commissioner Corona Sabaniano, do you have any questions this evening for staff?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Devlin, any questions for staff?
Yes, thank you. Can you, well, are these self-storage units generally located in industrial areas? That's, I think, generally where I think I have seen them. I mean, how many, do we have other examples of them being located adjacent to a lot of residential? Or kind of within, kind of mixed zoning?
I can actually jump in here. I live within a mile of this proposed site, and about a decade ago, there was a similar project between Norris and Eastern on Marconi. And it's a mixed, zone-mixed residential and commercial. And there were a lot of hesitation and anxiety about a proposed storage facility in that area. And after they had built and been in operation, it has been a complement to the area. It has transformed an aging infrastructure in an area that has been traditionally plagued with blight and homelessness and vandalism. And that area that I can, I tell you is, at least on Marconi, which is 1.1 miles away from this spot, harmonizes very well with the resident, residential area. So aesthetically, they've got lots of plants around it. And this, looking at the renditions and what they're being proposed here seems to kind of mirror what is in that area already.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
I, Kimberly Gutierrez, senior planner with Planning and Environmental Review. The planning commission did also approve a storage facility kind of within an office. There's auto sales, there's residential development as well off of Chippendale Drive. So that was another one that we have seen kind of more in a residential or mixed-use type of area as well.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioner Devlin?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chan. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant up.
Good evening. I'm Chris Stewart on behalf of William Warren Group.
Okay. And if you could please raise your right hand and the appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give to the commission is the truth, so help you God? And if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
And you did state your name for the record. And if you could please make this statement, I have been sworn.
I have been sworn.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Joining me tonight is Alyssa Parker and Evan Sharp from the William Warren Group. They're the developer. And the property owner is also here, Amir Rosiri. I'd like to address a few of the comments that were just made. We did prepare a noise analysis that evaluated the operations of the site and with the proposed hours. And the noise analysis concluded that the project meets the county's noise standards. The adjacent masonry wall, and then there's a landscape planter adjacent to the wall additionally mitigate the, any noise impacts from the operation. Another clarification is on this loading dock. And I wouldn't call it a dock. It's an at-grade door in the rear of the building. It's not the kind of dock we think of at a grocery store where a truck could back into it. So it's just a door. It's kind of a misnomer to call it a dock. We thank Austin for her help. Thank you. And we're in agreement with the conditions and can answer your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Questions for the applicant team this evening? All right, I'll turn to my online commissioners this evening. Questions, Commissioner Devlin or Corona Sabaniano?
Not for me, thank you.
Not for me either. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Stewart.
Thank you. I'd like to just add one more thing.
Of course.
You know, this is an investment in Watt Avenue in the redevelopment of that site. Obviously, if you've been in Sacramento for a while, you know the savings center, and it's a building that's been there, as Austin mentioned, for 30 years, and it's unsightly. It's a, it's an attractive nuisance. The property owner's gone to great lengths to keep the site tidy and free of nuisances, but it's, it's an ever, it's a non-ending problem. And so the developer here is making a pretty big investment in Watt Avenue in terms of architecture and design. It's not a typical storage project. It's been designed to look like office. So we think it's an improvement to the corridor.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right, that brings us to public comment this evening. I have one request to speak thus far. Jennifer Harris, welcome to come on down. We're going to give you three minutes this evening.
Thank you so much for your time, Mr. Chair and commissioners. I'm a resident, and I live about two miles from the proposed storage. And my main, I just wanted to reiterate what I said at the CPAC, and I was a little disappointed that there were three absences on that vote. But the thing that I have a little concern is definitely the height for this neighborhood, for our neighborhood. And I certainly appreciate the investment, the risk, the money that's been poured into this. And I'm concerned about a policy or practices that we have in Sacramento that allows blight for 30 years to go running with a, any property. But I realize that it takes money, it takes risk, it takes time. So I appreciate that. But the height, four year, four stories is a hard pass, for me at least. And that's something you could maybe adjust, I don't know. There are other existing storage units, which you mentioned already. There's one at Marconi at Norris, at Auburn Boulevard, Frienza, Howe, Wida, Hallmark, Harris Avenue Leisure Lane. These are so numerous that to me, it's, I guess it's just, what I'm objecting to is that, I guess, in Sacramento, we're really into storage. And I'm hoping for better. What I said at the CPAC meeting was, I would be willing to consider a big, tall building like this if it was somewhere that's training the best-ever electricians and plumbers or something like that. That's my dream. That's what I look for. But I understand, I appreciate any investment in our neighborhood. And I really, I wish everyone the best of success. Just a strong concern over the height and the number of storage unit areas. Any questions for me?
No, thank you, Ms. Harris. And do we have any other requests to speak this evening?
And we do not.
All right, we're going to go ahead and close public comment and move to Commissioner Deliberation.
Yeah, I want to first?
Oh, sorry, I skipped a step here. I'm going to give the applicant team an opportunity. If you'd like to respond to the public comment, you're welcome to come in. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Conklin, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Counsel.
Yeah, I appreciate the most recent comments made. And, you know, I too, you know, would love to, you know, I think we jointly envision our community being flooded with applications for retail and greater economic and employment opportunities and transit opportunities and workforce development opportunities. But unfortunately, those, those investments have not come in. And having lived for nearly 20 years in this area and had a storage facility put in, literally in, just in my backyard, had initial reservations, concerns, and have, I would say, for a better part of 10 years, harmoniously coexisted with it. And it has brought a net benefit to my immediate neighborhood, one that I walk by every day with my kids. And it has, it has, has brought many benefits. And so I am enthusiastically in support of this project and am very excited to see this project start in earnest. And when appropriate, would like to make a motion to support staff's recommendations.
Mr. Borja, anything to add? Just want to make it public that I did meet with the applicant and reviewed the application with the applicant because they did reach out. And I too echo, you know, I grew up in South Sacramento. We have storage facilities right next door to high schools. And I think we just have an opportunity here to also invest. And I do understand that as a developer, you would need to meet that economic, at least a posit pro forma, to be able to reach and hopefully make a positive business case in investing in that community. I do hope that, you know, this is not just the end of the construction of this site, but hopefully looking at staff as they're improving the Watt corridors plan, that we hopefully make heed of the comments by our neighbor today to see what other developments we can hopefully put together as a priority in the future when new, when new corridor planning, should we have staffing and info, when we get our info coordinator hired, that we perhaps look at the Watt corridor as something that's exciting to provide other incentives so that other development or other training centers that the public commenter provided can, you know, ultimately come to fruition. But as it is, I do think that this is a sensible project that's taking what's formerly blighted and again, place that has not, not received a lot of love to hopefully something better. I also did drive to a Broadway Store Quest example just to kind of see. And again, with the limited amount of hours, I just don't believe that there would be such a tremendous impact to the neighborhood, at least to the immediate neighborhood. So for that, I would be happy to second the motion.
Sounds good. I'll chime in just briefly. I think the design is thoughtful, and the operating conditions are thoughtful as far as the location. So I'll be, I'll be in support of this project. Commissioner Corona Sabaniano, anything to add?
I'll just associate my, my comments with Commissioner Borja. I agree. I think that, and just urge staff to think about incentives to bring in additional business, additional what-have-you in that area. I think that storage facilities are, I guess I'm not as enthusiastic about them. So, but I understand that that's what's before us. So just encourage staff to, to really look at this area and see what, what additional benefits we could bring to that area.
Commissioner Devlin?
Thank you. I do share the concerns of our one public comment. And I acknowledge that this may not be the most ideal of what we all might not have, or we might have wanted or hoped for. However, 30 years is a very long time. And I think that this is, you know, maybe this brings more good along with it and hopefully is a spark of redevelopment for that corridor. So I'm going to be happy to support it.
I'll just conclude with, sorry for bashing your business model. We appreciate the investment in the, in the area. So we have a motion? And we have a second? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Borja?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Corona Sabaniano?
Yes.
Devlin?
Yes.
And Raythal?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. That concludes item number three. And we'll move on to the miscellaneous portion of the agenda, the Planning Director's Report. Oh, yeah, that's right. Planning Director's Report next.
Good evening, commissioners. Very brief report tonight. For those of you who are in person, I handed out one of these little postcard-sized pieces of paper. What this is, is our shelf-ready ADU plans. These are, I think, three to five, depending on how you count it, different ADU-sized plans. So ranging from the smallest one, 460 square feet, up to an 1,184-square-foot unit. There's a couple of variations within two of the plans, so you can count maybe three to five. All of these have been pre-checked through our Building Department for structural, electrical, plumbing code, et cetera. These are now live on our website through the Building Department, free plans for those interested in building ADUs in unincorporated Sacramento County. And that is all.
That's wonderful. Thanks so much for sharing this with us. We'll now move on to public comments. First up, I've got Angela Adams. And then on deck, I've got Cesar Placentia.
Sir, just a quick question on the, our folk, Todd, our Planning Director, Smith. Are folks able to request the CAD files for this?
Good question. I don't know, but we can find out.
Okay.
There may be some contractual language in the contract with the architect who worked on these.
Okay.
They do need to have a site plan. Anyone who's interested in using these would need to have a site plan where they can put the ADU itself on their individual property. But I'm not sure about CAD files. I'll find out.
Okay, understood. Thank you so much. That's it.
All right, come on down, Angela.
Thank you for having me, Chair, commissioners, staff. Good evening, Chair, I mean, I just said that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Angela Adams, and I have dedicated the past 16 years of my life to carpenters' union specializing in drywall lath and metal framing. I am here today to advocate for my brothers and sisters in the carpenters' union and for myself regarding the core values and area labor standards that are so vital to our industry. It is crucial to have these standards in place to ensure accountability across the board. These rules protect all parties involved, ensuring fair wages and safe working conditions. I have personally experienced long hours and lengthy commutes required just to make ends meet, which is why I'm all-in for local hiring, which is one of NorCal's great core values. Now that I have the opportunity to share my experience, I want to emphasize on the importance of maintaining and enforcing area labor standards. There were times when my paycheck was delayed or incorrect, creating significant hardship. Others in the trade face similar issues, feeling they deserve better treatment or more respect for their labor. Thanks to the carpenters' rules and regulations, these issues had to be addressed, ensuring that everyone complies with the standards that protects us all. That gives all constructions, all construction workers the chance to obtain apprenticeship training, good health insurance, prevailing wage, and prevailing wage. This is why I'm a strong supporter for the carpenters' core values. These standards are not just about rules. They are about dignity, fairness, and ensuring that every worker can support their families. I ask the planning commission to recognize and uphold the importance of area labor standards for the well-being of all construction workers in the trade. Thank you. I'm a bit nervous, but you guys bear with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Appreciate you coming down tonight. Next up, we've got Cesar Placentia.
All right, good evening, Chair, commissioners. I am a carpenter. Today's time before you shed light on three critical pillars of societal well-being: livable wages, healthcare, accessibility, and apprenticeships in the construction. Firstly, the concept of livable wage is not just about earning enough to survive, but thriving with dignity. It ensures that individuals can afford the basics, food, shelter, and healthcare. Secondly, healthcare should not be a luxury, but a fundamental human right. but a fundamental human right. Accessible healthcare ensures that no one has to choose between financial ruin and their well-being. Lastly, apprenticeships in construction offers a pathway to sustainable careers and economic stability. By investing in vocational training, we not only address the skilled labor shortage, but also provide opportunities for personal growth and development. In conclusion, let us strive for a society where everyone has access to livable wages, healthcare, and opportunities for advancement. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, that concludes our public comments this evening. And we'll move to miscellaneous scheduling items.
And so the next meeting will be on August 12, and the following meeting will be on the 26th of August. And there are two items currently scheduled on the agenda for August 12, and they're both non-contested.
All right, anyone not planning being here on the 12? Sounds good. And just a quick straw poll for the 26. Expect you all in attendance celebrating my birthday that day. I will be here, I think. All right.
I will likely not be at the meeting on the 26.
Got it, we've got that down. And that goes ahead, concludes our meeting this evening at 6:28. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.